I'm good. We're going to begin the open session. Ask y'all what your status of the president allegiance and keep remain on the detailed indication. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we have a just and fair
Respect. Father, again, we thank you for the blessing to serve here in Holtville Council. We pray that you are glad our people and the generations to come honor the citizens of this state's opportunity and also honor the young and the process. Help us to help us and that is the best place to go for the citizens of this state's citizens. Same first, the meeting has been posted in the post in the fifth and the sixth.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda was posted on Friday, July 25th.
Attorney Walker, executive session.
The report will act.
I think I'm here to present something from the Imperial Valley Friday's fourth of September. I can't tell on my skin.
That's not, that's the old edition.
She sent her last agenda.
I was gonna say, I didn't see Pete. I had a classmate hide from me last week and he's in class ahead of me.
That's next, next meeting, sorry.
Well, we have a presentation for the Imperial Valley 9/11 stair climb. You're much better looking. Tell him I said that.
A little bit taller. We were building the shoes. Do you guys mind if I move this to the center over here?
No.
As far as you can. Now I can see it. You can see me. Perfect. So Mike, as I mentioned earlier, my name is Eric Pinyon, so I'm with the Imperial Valley 9/11 Stair Climb Committee. And I'm here to, I would like to start off by saying thank you for allowing me to be here to present to you the board of supervisors here and then also the public. Thank you all for allowing me to be here. As I mentioned earlier, I'm here to inform you of the 9/11 memorial stair climb that we have every year. Our committee is formed of members that represent the fire community, law enforcement community, and public in the private sector who are dedicated to ensuring that the Imperial Valley never forgets the tragic events that took place on September 11th of 2001. We do this by hosting a memorial stair climb every year that honors and pays respects a tribute to the 343 firefighters, the 60 law enforcement officers, person and the personnel, 10 emergency medical personnel that lost their lives on that tragic Tuesday morning in 2001. This year marks our 24th anniversary of September 11th and for the Imperial Valley, we will be hosting our 11th annual Memorial Stair Climb event. At the Imperial Valley Fairgrounds. And so you, I brought a video that shows a little bit of what we do there and how we honor these heroes. So as you can tell, each participant climbs or walks the equivalent of 110 stories of the World Trade Center carrying the name and photo of a fallen hero to symbolically complete their climb. Early registration for participants is now open at $25 through September 6th. And onsite registration will be $25 on the day of the event. And the event starts at, opens at 6:00, stair climbing begins at 7:00. Participants that register before August 22nd will be able to receive their event t-shirt on the day of the event and registration can be completed on our website, which is www.iv911.org. We also seek sponsorship opportunities that come in four different levels ranging from the 343, 413, 911, and 2001. All symbolically representing 343 fallen firefighters, 413 public service members, 911 for the day, and 2001 for the year. Each level receives different degrees of recognition and advertisement during the event and memorabilia as well as sponsorship dinner invitations. Funds that are raised for the 9/11 Stair Climb Committee go towards the committee. We provide charitable assistance to local firefighters and families and promote scholarship opportunities. And this year, we are also wanting to bring awareness to our inaugural safety, public safety gala. If your local law enforcement and firefighter organization would like to submit a, or recognize one of their officers or a firefighter, we encourage that they do so. And the winner who receives recognition during the gala will be recognized as well as we will be, there will be tables for anybody who wants to attend the gala. So there is a flyer. I don't know if you have that flyer there in your packet, but I do have, yeah. And so this is our first annual inaugural public safety gala. With that said, I'd like to thank you once again for allowing me to speak to you today. And you can help us out by advertising here at your local community and also we'd like to thank you for your previous and past participation and thank you for your support and I'll leave it open for questions.
I didn't have any good to fly on the gala.
You did use pocket here, this is a.
It's alright.
Never really wants to see you there.
Oh, in the gala, I'm sorry.
That's about the 9/11 stair climb.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't have that flyer.
I have a few more here, but it's.
Is that the one that was canceled last year because of the fires?
Yes.
When is the gala?
Sorry, let me copy the date.
That's right.
Yes, we will be having it the following month and we wanna, we wanna keep the momentum going with the 9/11 stair climbing and recognize the local.
So your website has all that information too?
Yes, that is correct.
When you get the clothes hat, I can like.
So sponsorship levels, we do give out hats with the sponsorship levels. And we do sell them at the day of the event, but they come in different colors and we have the. Other number.
Ooh, boy, that's a big number, level four. I was gonna volunteer for level two.
We'll take whatever you can give us. The funds do go to building a memorial there at Ivy Expo. And so we are making good progress and this year we're already starting the brick round and we're gonna start the first page. So it should be approximately three pages of that memorial that's going up as well.
You said you guys also give sponsor and sponsorship scholarships?
Yes, so this year we started our scholarship program and we are giving, I believe, four scholarships to firefighters or law enforcement students at the Imperial Valley College and they, on our website, it's on there as well and they can apply. There was a deadline for that, but I believe it was early August for the deadline to submit for those, but we did give out the scholarships as well.
Yeah, we always had good intentions to go to this, we should try to all.
Well, I think John and I were there last year. Mike, did you?
I was there the year before.
Year before. It's a good event. I, I, it took me a while to get, to get to the point where I started going every year, but this will be my third or fourth year.
It is a good event. Good music, good atmosphere. You run into all the locals.
Excuse, I'm retired.
So the stair climbing is not as, as bad as people think. It's, you can do it at your pace. You can, you know, it's a conversational pace.
They make those steps so big.
I just wish that we make it so late, you know, an old guy like me, I'm in bed by nine in the time. It's just so hot here outside.
That's, that's why they do it so.
I've done the, those events at other stadiums like Anaheim and stuff where we have to climb those stadiums and those are small steps and those are worse. I tell you what, council, it's, they're bad.
Cool, well, thank you for coming to chair and it is a great event.
Thank you.
We're making it even better this year, that's a good thing.
Appreciate it. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, we want to go to general public comments. The public may address the city council on any item that's on the agenda for this meeting. Whether it's a prayer here at the city council, anyone willing to walk up there and give a goose's call.
Don't you look at me.
I'm waiting.
I have some complaints, but I am Stacy Bridgeway, 54 Cedar Avenue. I do have one complaint and it's in my alleyway. There is a fence in an abandoned house that is falling down and one of the posts on top is actually like leaning into the alley. I'm surprised the R and R has not completed it up yet because it is. And if you're coming the wrong way and not knowing the alleyway, we will inform the council. So we can have some of these people get it. I know the lady died a week ago, but her grandson is supposed to be cleaning it up. But the notice is not on, so it's addressed to her.
Good.
Stacy, we gotta get you using our reporting system, I think.
We got this really good system as well.
She's the boss of it, so.
Yeah.
Which I do check.
I was gonna call this morning about a dog too, that I just showed her that my house on a 20-foot chain with a paddle.
Well, she's here. Laura, did you want to come? If anything happened lately, is there any news at all?
Is that a meeting going on tonight?
It happened earlier today. I got a meeting for Laura. It's, it's.
No, no, no. I need to do that, it's like, nothing was telling, so.
We had to get her out there for three steps.
But I am happy to report from IVHD that the city of El Centro County that they're meeting this afternoon approved the asset transfer agreement. They will be putting out a press release and we, of course, are all excited. Now the hard work begins because we go into escrow and of course we have the agreement and there's all kinds of things that have to be met in order for things to actually close and happen, but we are truly excited that we made it to this point and I think the estimates I've heard is that it takes like five or six months before we actually close on the deal. But we have agreements from all three, El Centro Regional, the city, IVHD. And all that's left is to pick the signatures on it and so are pretty excited about that. And I did say my happy mouth. I think it's a win for the people of the Imperial Valley and it's gonna be really exciting from this point forward.
And the good news is Laura's eligible to run for, run to stay on the board.
It could be a harder again, I don't know, but I kind of feel like. It must have been here. Any other questions? If anyone moves, you can all join us. Our next meeting is August the 14th. If you go to our website, you can join us via Zoom if you're curious.
Laura, is that new?
You're asking that. Well, I think we're back in Raleigh. We are ready, Hayden. And we tried creating a rotation schedule that we could all actually remember. So I think it's gonna be Raleigh, El Centro, and Colexica. And we were just in Colexica, so that means the next meeting is in Raleigh, then it's gonna be in El Centro. We did switch our leading venue to be at El Centro Regional Medical Center's conference room, so I'm pretty sure after we do the next meeting, it's actually Colexica, so. We're gonna be on that rotation for the rest of the year.
So Laura, are you guys, are you on track to meetings before the voters in 2026 or running for them?
We.
I mean, now that you have a deal with El Centro.
Because I know our goal is to try and get it on there, I believe, in June. So that way, you know, if we get a council gives us November. That will be the next hard piece of work, I think, for us now that we know we have the coming together and we can stop doing two different scenarios for if, and if, and if, and what, we can actually start really working on it. That's right.
Consent agenda. The item on the consent agenda. Are we approved without comment? Should any council member or member of the public wish to discuss in the item, they may be. They may request that the item be removed from the consent agenda and face the reductions that. You got item A, approval of amendments from the regular meeting Monday, June 23rd, 2025, and item B, current demands for 48238.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the item consent agenda. You have the backup information in your packet with respect to resolutions 25, that's 14, and 25, that's 17. One is if it was CNEC funding, and that's to do with the block rate of some sort. Did that get on the consent agenda? Did you have the information? And you can do it one of two ways. You can make a motion to amend your consent agenda to add those two items as an urgency matter. Or I suppose if you're coming back next Wednesday for a stressful meeting, you could add it to that agenda. Either way works, but Sats think there's some time.
So it is, it is responsive and all it is, all it, if you have any for fit, um, with the SCVG and CNEC projects, essentially SECCC had revised numbers that they were. That's all the places they would have.
So I think I'll go, I think I'll try to commence consent agenda.
It wasn't your original one and then I said, oh, here's the revised one. And it didn't make it to that one. So I had some trouble with the name of the file and it kept going back and forth, so if. Yeah, so. Yep.
So I just require a motion to add it to the agenda. That would be resolutions 25, 14, and 25, 17.
Second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Well, we already have one second.
So let's go to the second, two, the current demand for 48238. Three, and 48, 321.
Sorry, that was, who was the first on that one?
Okay, but that was the motion to add, to add, so now we need a motion to. Okay.
Okay, so same, same, okay.
Is it clear for you over there?
Yes, thank you. Okay. John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
Mike Goodso?
Yes.
Reports of all association committees and computer cables.
Um, about a month ago, I had sent out some backflow letters to help out our Public Works Department. Just reminding, you know, everyone to test their backflows. Um, that was at the beginning of July and then at the beginning of August, I'll try to send out a reminder for those that haven't got that done yet. Um, and then, let's see, a couple of weeks.
Reminder to residents to test their backflow?
Yes, so.
How do residents know what the whole backflow is?
Well, I'm not sure, but I mean, we send them a letter telling them about it.
They have to hire somebody to test the backflow.
And they, yeah, we, we give them a list of the approved, the approved people that they can, you know, get it done. Yeah. So I mean, one of the options is to schedule the backflow to be tested by someone from Public Works. And then we give them some options of people who are licensed with the city. Um, no, there, there is a cost.
There is a cost.
Yeah.
It's applied to all?
The third, no. Those that have backflows and mostly back, most of the backflows are in the county. Yes.
There's a few in, yeah, but.
There's a few in town, but most of them are.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is an annual thing that they have to test it, so they're, they should be familiar with it at this point if they have it, so. Anyways, yeah, I did help, I'll send those letters.
So just so you're aware that the seat of Holtville is in textbooks for water management for backflow devices because we had an issue with the country club wherein people had both canal water and, and it backflowed into our system and there was a boil, boil water notice and everything. And so that's the cautionary tale for everybody. It's actually in textbooks. They have gone, our guys have gone to classes in Las Vegas and like, this city in Holtville, they be screwed up and this stuff. Right, right.
But hopefully with those notices, they get it taken care of, so. Um, also for me, a couple of weeks ago, I went to our chamber meeting as a director for the first time. So that was, that was cool. I did give the city a feed in your place. I missed you. Yes. Um, so yeah, just carrot festival stuff with that. And then on Friday, with a big help from Matt from CRNR, our EAR was submitted to IVRMA, our CalRecycle Annual Report. Just saying that we're doing all the good stuff with our waste management, basically. Um, so. Yeah, I, I think it comes up whenever it's like time to renew CRNR. But I don't know if this kind of gets mentioned, like how much Matt really helps out with that kind of stuff with reporting, so I do want to say he does basically do all the work for that. So it's, it's really helpful. I kind of just looked through it and, you know, from what I've gone into our reporting system and I say, that's good, so. He, he's very helpful with that, so thanks to Matt. And that's it for me.
Uh, I don't have too much to report, but I will say, did have a meeting, um, now it's a couple of weeks ago, with folks from Doug's Construction regarding the Perry and Sons Labor Camp Project and they're spinning up to get that thing going here pretty quick, so. Of course, they've been, they've been sitting on it for how long, you guys can know, uh, and now they're like, we need to get this thing submitted, we need you to turn it around within two weeks, we need to be in construction within four. Okay, you know, so. We're working on that. Um, the only other thing I would have to report is that I did take my beautiful wife on vacation. We went to Missouri. Just for the heck of it, a lot of scenic stuff we checked out and had fun. And last week, I hopefully did not play Buck Owens Crystal Palace for the last time in my life, but I played Buck Owens Crystal Palace. It's one of my favorites. And Mr. Mayor came and Laura came.
Attorney Walker? Uh, not business related, but Holtville related. Um, so I spent Fourth of July weekend in La Pointe, Wisconsin, on a little island called Malamaline. It has the best darn parade, short of the parade festival parade for the Fourth of July. Everybody gets enrolled, all the kids are enrolled, lots of people dressed up, statues, there'll be all the American flags. My little parade where when you get to the end, you kind of go back to, start, start again and it kind of goes on all day. So anyway, it's a lot of fun. Remind me, I'll go. And it was 75 degrees at those times.
By the way, I want to just throw it out into the ether. Uh, we're now 11 months from the 250-year anniversary of the nation and opening that capsule out there. And I want you all to, we've talked about it a little bit in the past, but we, we need to figure out what we're gonna do as far as the ceremony to open the thing. What we want to do, do we want to replace it and get start, like maybe we'll chamber, chamber that come up with a, um, a new cap, time capsule to be opened at the 300-year anniversary or whatever. Um, and, uh, you know, how that all looks and what we want to do, so.
You think it's gonna be a disco ball?
Good thing it's 1976, that was.
And that's on, that's on the Fourth of July, right?
Well, I, that, that would be the, that's the day that's on the time capsule we're supposed to open it. There's probably a Bee Gees record in there.
How many years?
Fifty.
You have a big old drone show.
A drone show?
No fireworks?
No.
I was just gonna say, a big fireworks, oh, a drone show.
You should invite the Walter Rivera.
He doesn't do castles anymore. He might come, he's like 85.
At least we can get somebody dressed up like that, right? Anyway. And he famously opened a vault. Jimmy Hop, and they opened it and there's nothing in it.
I can't remember if I shared it last time, I didn't watch the drone show. Here, it was pretty good, yeah. It was good. Alright, I appreciate it. Um, aside from that, just been enjoying our beautiful playground with the park. Yeah, not much to report.
Well, I wanted to talk about this. Councilman?
I don't have anything to report.
Should Damien will talk about.
Well, maybe you don't have anything to report. You've been busy investigating things, so.
I've been, um, so last week.
It's been maybe your job.
You insist.
You don't have to identify yourself.
I was a witness to something. She is aware. And it's been taken care of, thank you.
Uh, my wife and I have been enjoying the pool, but I didn't want to forget the question last. Should we talk about putting up some benches and a.
I bought some.
Okay.
Did they not put them out or?
Well, when, when we were there, the first time I didn't see them. So I just wanted to follow, because I thought that they were maybe put ones over on the grass.
Yeah, uh, just, I, this is one of those things where I have to stay personally involved in these things because I set a couple of words that we're supposed to add some concrete and I didn't want to do that until we added the concrete, the more permanent stuff. So I bought some more temporary stuff this year. I hope it's being put out every year.
No, I, I just wanted to see if that was, if what's there is what we talked to be for the grass, so to change.
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow on that. I will say that we have enjoyed that Chinese restaurant a number of times. Uh, really enjoyed that and then also have the, uh, the pleasure to sit down with some of our Jeffy dollars a little bit. We talked about, uh, volunteer recruiting, uh, just some of the disparities here in the, uh, local area. Um, I don't know where that conversation's gonna go, but, um, it was nice to be able to try to gain some kind of traction. Thank you.
Real quick on the time capsule, my mom was a, a chamber secretary at the time that put in, so I have a little bit inside. It's in there and a lot of it has to do, people put stuff in there for their family members. So there'll be a lot of things come out, let's say, go to the Goodso family, the Goodso's, the Pacheco's, or the Moore's. So I know people put that in, so. There's, and then there's, I'm sure there's other things in there from the, from the 200th anniversary and stuff like that.
So did the chamber run the, run the deal on that?
Chamber did.
That's, that's, that's always been my assumption, but I, that was two years after, again, two years after.
It was, uh, Marianne Gilson, I think Mrs. Samau. Marianne's still alive and she plans on being here for the opening of it. They're the ones that the chambers would. They're the ones that the chambers wouldn't. I know there's, uh, there's James Law, for sure, yeah. And, and Mary Ann Wilson. So I know there's a lot of, uh, letters and people put stuff in there for their fam, they knew they wouldn't be here, but for their future nieces and, or, or grandchildren. There's that stuff in there too. I spent Fourth of July in Washington DC, got to visit my oldest brother, got to, I love history. Uh, so this kind of, kind of pushed to the beginning of Washington, Washington DC. Realized how inefficient they were even back then. Different things I saw. Canals that were built have never had water in them and just, it's so. I, I, I look back and I think how good Holtville, we might sometimes, people complain about us, but we are better than federal government. And if you don't think so, go back there. Of course, I count this as August, so countdown, Mr. Walker, this will, it's, it's countdown to the party. Gets me through the top, gets the box.
I've already ordered the tractors.
Yeah, they get cheaper right now, right?
Not much. Um, you guys don't want to stack? You guys have any questions from that and adding to the original discussion. If you guys see anything, please call, um, really out loud. Cause sometimes you guys are the first, we get a lot of that. People don't call until the next day. Really appreciate you guys calling. And some people were arrested for arson, so hopefully.
And it wasn't me.
What were you doing?
No history.
Yes, I, I, I'm a, I've intended to do that. Did I send it? I sent it to you or I said, just, I just spiffed that thing up and I just didn't send it out, but I will, I'll.
He said it's me, I think, or something. I have it. You sent it to them whenever you were going to be out.
Oh, yeah, I did. I sent it to you all in email recently. But not on, you want the card, okay. Okay.
And I was like the only person up on there, by the way.
So, um, earlier this month, firefighters were going to be at the library and I was like, oh, I wanna, I wanna participate. I wanna participate. So I let she was telling them, then about five minutes before the thing, calling me, says, hey, the fire guys have called. Can you go read? And I said, sure. So I went and read to the library, um, to, I had some kids program, not exactly sure what the program was, cause I kind of got there, you know, like. I just read a book. It was so awesome. And for those of you that don't know, my mother, who's a pastor, was a vegetarian for thirty years. And we actually started a permanent in Rio County called the Jameson Program. Which is, uh, she was a reading specialist. She taught young kids how to read. So, um, the CASA, court-appointed special advocates helps all the youth, um, foster youth find, um, homes or have activities to kind of get out of their hardships. And so the program is a permanent on down in Rio County that will help these foster kids learn how to read. And have the appropriate books and have like access to all that. So it was kind of, and I happened to be wearing my mom's dress. So it kind of just all reminded me and told me like I'm exactly where I'm supposed to be in City of Holtville. It was awesome. And like, it's especially, so, yeah. Yeah. So I'm, I'm gonna be partnering with probably the, doing something with the library here in Hoco, so. And that's it.
For myself, I had an ICT community last week. Um, but I had another meeting today. Uh, I went over to the airport. Your wife was there. Gosh, everybody was there. There was a lot of people in county and other cities and they were there because there's this topic called Vance Air. It's, uh, like D town had made a presentation of what they would like to offer as far as airline services out of material. Their home, their house or their home place is Hawthorne, California. But they serve Phoenix and other areas. Uh, we got some pretty good ideas. I mean, everybody was putting their best for it, trying to get it, you know, so. There was a lot of skepticism in the room. Cause you know how, how you've got, we're already better than we're before. Your wife was the first one out of the box with some very perfect questions. Yeah, it, 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 it went, it went round and round a bit, but it was impressive what they wanted to offer. Uh, it, it's kind of a, a natural fit for them to, to have us in between their juncture, their, their John over to Phoenix, you know, to have a, a, us, a hub in between. To make that move. But also they're talking about offering flights to Carlsberg. When you get to, uh, San Diego, North San Diego, you'll be, you'll be going to Carlsberg. The, one of the nice things about flying to Hawthorne is you don't have to do. It was pretty brutal to deal with the LAX stuff and wait for shuttle and get another shuttle and all of that. Hawthorne, you can go right to their restaurant and their bar and wait for your Uber or whatever. And you're only three miles from LAX. You're a short distance from there. You've got to go make that connection. And you find your Uber ride over there if you want and not deal with all that. Wait for that shuttle and wait for that next shuttle.
How big a plane do you fly?
What they actually talked about.
King Air, King Air three fifty, seven nine dash, eight ten, dash hundred.
Yeah, they, they won't have any trouble with the weather being too hot to get off the ground like the other outfit kind of, I don't know, made sense, but they, they said at one point, I, I was too hot on my bike. You know, I'd say it's whatever. They, they, they're used to coming on the heels of, uh, what didn't work out for communities and the services they have. So they're not surprised to carry the, um, work position to, to need them to step in or somebody else, somebody else to fail, you know, that happens time to time. But pretty reasonable what they're, they're offering. So, but everybody in the room was like, yeah, okay, we'll see, you know. But if it could really work that well, uh, I think it's happening pretty well. So keep around in that sphere. Okay, so we're on unfinished business we're having. Uh, new business. Uh, we do have, uh, one of our things here, a Starbuck's Discussion Related Act regarding sponsorship of that underwhelming memorial stair climb. We have listed something like that as well?
So, uh, the last couple of years, I should turn this over to Yvette. She actually did the report and left my name on it, but I will say, because I have that, this history, last couple of years, we've, we've done the four thirteen sponsorship. So, um, I'll just throw that out and, um, Yvette, do you have anything to add since you did the report?
It says silver on there, but since then they've changed the levels like one, two, three. And before it was like silver runs, whatever. So that's the only thing that, yeah.
So I, I don't know how y'all feel. Um, I, I certainly, you know, last time I think, uh, Mike, you made the suggestion that maybe we should try to get, uh, get more, more involvement. Um, I think last time, uh, I, uh, John, John and I were the only ones, uh, as I, I remember thinking, oh, oh, Hoco's not gonna have anybody going. I had knee surgery or not knee surgery, but a procedure done on my knee two days before. And so I was like, I don't know if I should do this, but I just went ahead and did it. So, you know. It's not that, not that tough.
Didn't we talk about challenging the other city, the other city companies?
Uh, did we, did we talk about it or, yeah, yeah, or?
Talked about it.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think we've done that actually the last couple of years. It's not kind of the permission, like, you know, we've been offered much of a challenge or something, so we don't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I certainly, I, I'm, I'm on board and I, I, I'm a believer. I'll go as long as I'm available, you know, so I, I do have a weekend set aside, so.
I'll probably participate.
You can go through yoga buddy, cause she and I don't go at the same pace, so.
What am I, will I be more at her pace?
I don't know.
Do we have a four by banner that we can display?
Uh, we, not necessarily. I, I think we could come up with one, you know, for sure, like the logo or, uh, Capitol world kind of stuff.
Because that's one of the things that, is that, it says an option two displays the banner. If you do level three or level four.
We might be able to borrow it. I know there's like, I feel like there's a logo banner for the city that like we use for the parade. I don't know what else it says on there, but it might just say City of Holtville. So I could see if they have that, cause they do store it upstairs.
Yeah.
I'll check.
They store it. Come on.
So for this level two, the four hundred and fifteen, it's got two sponsor dinner to provide to you guys. Chandler and Mr. Wells will have those two and the two in future events. We go to Mayor Walker.
Yeah, but I don't need the, I'm sorry to get you to do it anyway. I don't need, I'm the one who wants to go. They should have first day, first pick.
So the sponsor dinner last year, I was going to defer, but nobody else was going to go. So I did go. Um, uh, but.
Well, Johnson.
It's a little loose.
Was it right before?
It's the night before.
Oh, the date?
On Friday night?
Yeah. I mean, the other thing too is if, if you guys, if you want to push yourselves into this, we could go to the, the nine eleven la, level, level two and, uh, and, and have some, and push ourselves to have more people involved. I don't know too.
How often are we doing sponsorships? Are we doing them for any other organization?
Not very. Um, we kind of, I, I, just in review, we kind of had a, had a discussion about it in the past. We don't really need to advertise services for the city, you know, we don't need to, um, there's a certain amount of community involvement thing. In this deal, they're going to build a memorial that has kind of focuses on each city. Uh, and so, I don't know, we kind of talked about kind of helping out with that, with that eventually as well, but. Yeah, I, I, it's, it's probably a lot of task. I mean, the four thirteen thing is probably a good idea and.
I'll talk for, and, uh, Kevin Cooper's West do the four thirteen. Opens up those other four for the other council members. If you do the nine eleven.
Yeah, Murray, Murray, not in, not in, not in a month, not in one month. Well, it's not that far really. It's six weeks, right? Yeah, okay.
Oh, that's the bye week. No, next.
Oh, you're talking to the cheer coach. Cheer coach is here.
It's an away game. The, the bye is the next one.
Uh, look at that, away game.
I'd like you to do a, the track.
We, either way, you have to do, to do the full thing, you have to do laps of the track. There's, the stairs is like two, two sets of chips. Nobody's supposed to do more than like two sets of stairs or whatever. So. Whatever. But. Did you do it last year?
Well, would we, would you comfortable with council up into the level three?
I would prefer to stay at level two. So that in the event, if we have any other organizations, we have that. In case we need global teams or what have you in Hoco, I would like to stay at a lower level, just for future.
But we have a goal for our budget for being able to do the W two, correct?
Yeah, but we have an amount in there for donations. Yes, so.
Do you know what that amount is off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. Um, I, I will say that it's mostly delineated like five hundred for this and, you know, but there's a little bit of wiggle room in there, I think.
I, I have no problem. Um, I, I still would propose that we do level two. I would prefer to pay for my, uh, registration at a map.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I motion to sponsor at level two, four thirteen.
I'll second that.
Do you want a motion for Lauren, think for, um?
I didn't know that's.
Okay.
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodsell?
Yes.
And, and by the way, I, they're, they're, they're pretty good with us. If we, if we get everybody going, we'll chance some probably up to get everything.
We're not challenging the other city.
Um, then you can tell me for, for doing the event. But like I said, I can pay for mine. I don't know if you want to like register all together or how you want to do that. So.
I can take care of that.
We're going to have an B here, discussion related actions for Dr. Russell, she's twenty-five, twenty-one, offer exit, be advertised, invitation for bids.
Offer exit advertised, we take our bids, pedestrian, bicycle, public, online, following avenue.
He is not.
No, but that's all right, I know about it, I can tell you. So as you all know, we've finished the undergrounding process of the canal, repair canal on Ninth between Olive and Mellon. And we had procured money to do the curb better and sidewalk with kind of some ancillary widening of Ninth Street Lawn there. We finally got the okay to proceed from Caltrans, not last Friday, but Friday before that. And so, as our procurement policy says, we're supposed to bring it to you all before we go in here. We're bringing that to you to say we need to go out, get a contract, or put the contract stuff out to bid and look for a resident engineer to oversee the construction.
John Munger.
Yes.
Mike Pacheco. Mary Anderson.
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez.
Yes.
And Mike Goodsell.
I see discussion related actions to adopt resolution from five twenty two. Proven the extension of sewer services outside the city limit to a property located in sixteen seventy Alamo Road.
Thank you, Mayor. We were approached by Mr. Hector Perez, who lives just outside of the city limits on Alamo Road, to hook to the city sewer system. Generally not a problem for us to add a resident. We do have service right in that area that he can hook to. But Lafco requires that we coordinate with them for any services that we provide outside of our service, outside of our city limits. I have had conversation.
Sorry.
Had conversation with Lafco. They are aware that we're moving forward, so we're kind of working on the paperwork. I don't think there's anything too spectacular about it. He's gonna have to work with an engineer and give us plans and give us about how he's gonna do the connection and all those kinds of things. We'll handle that on a staff level.
It's all his costs?
All his costs.
No financial.
No, no financial, correct. He pays for Lafco, there's a Lafco fee, there's a connection fee. It's actually positive money to us, there's connection fee and impact sewer impact fees that don't help you gain both.
Is he already on our water? Is he connected to water? Because I know the property next to it, we did.
I knew this answer, I think the answer is yes, but I'm not a hundred percent positive. So. Danny, you've seconded everything so far, haven't you?
John Munger.
Yes.
Mike Pacheco.
Yes.
Mary Anderson.
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez.
Yes.
And Mike Goodsell.
Uh, I will, I will handle this for now and then Chandler may jump in. I'm just gonna basically open it up if you guys have any questions, but I do wanna point out a couple of things. And I kind of alluded to some of this in an earlier discussion we had before council tonight. But the, the city has gotten to be in pretty firm financial position in the time that I've been here, largely due to council being fiscally conservative and I hope we continue that. If I call your attention to page eight, it shows the general fund, fund balance kind of towards the bottom of that page, which is five point zero seven four million dollars. That's our reserve fund. That's what we have in reserve in case we have any emergencies and whatnot. Now, that does include some funds that are spoken for, not fully spoken for, but the council has indicated that we're gonna use those for certain things. Not the least of which is about one point four million dollars from ARPA funding that we're going to use for the public safety building. So we do have about two million dollars, I estimate, free and clear of any commitments, which is, it's really good to have that much. Our operating budget is about two point nine three million. So having about two thirds of our, of our annual expenditures on hand as a reserve is pretty, pretty good. I will point out that about fifteen years ago, fourteen years ago, when I arrived at the city, we were about a half a million dollars, which is nowhere near enough to operate a city this size. Next thing I will call your attention to is on page twelve. And why did I call, why did I put page twelve? Oh, I know, I know. This basically says, shows what last year happened. And you can see right towards the bottom, it says net change in fund balance was negative forty thousand. So last year we had forty thousand dollars, our expenditures exceeded our revenue by forty thousand. So as I was saying earlier, if you have half a million dollars sitting there and forty thousand is in the negative, that's a significant amount. When you have a couple of million dollars, it's a little harder, a little easier to handle that cushion. But we certainly wanna be careful and not eat into our reserve funds too frequently. The last thing I'm gonna point out is when you get to page fifteen, because we do accounting on a cash basis in the city of Hopeville, all of the things that we have as assets, the water plant, the sewer plant, even the streets, the building that we're sitting in, none of those are listed as assets for the city. Those are all just assumed to be paid for or we owe money on them or whatever. But because it's cash basis, we do not record them as assets. By the way, we are working on changing that and changing to accrual accounting, which is kind of the standard of the world. Why would we have been on cash, cash basis, I don't know for all these years. But nevertheless, if you look at the, on page fifteen, it talks about our enterprise funds, which are water, sewer and trash, solid waste. And you see that we've got one point five million dollars in assets for the water plant. So that's, that's a kind of, you know, it's a good position to be in to have that kind of cash. Now, it does show that we have two point eight million dollars in liabilities. And most of that is basically bonds for the rebuilding of the water plant. In two thousand and ten, we had that tank that went down. We revoked that tank and we had taken out bonds at that point, so most of that is all in that.
How many years is that bond?
Uh, I believe it's forty.
Forty years.
Um, yeah, so that's a USDA loan. And it's, they are technically bonds, but it's a loan through USDA. And one thing I should say on that, and I kind of mentioned this in the budget process, but the way that thing got worked out, it got split into two separate loans. And one of the loans we're paying off this year and will be done. The other one is the one that's the longer term one, so. So that's the water fund, the sewer fund. You'll see three point nine million dollars in assets. We do have six million, six point three million in liabilities. I kind of described this several times over the last couple of years, but sewer fund's doing fairly well financially. Unfortunately, one of the things that happens by having that plant that we have over there, it's a pretty high tech plant. And you'll remember that this year, two separate occasions, we did a hundred and fifty thousand dollar upgrades. One for new sewer membranes and one for the UV filtration system. The lucky thing is when you have that kind of cash on hand, we can pay cash for those things. We don't have to go out and borrow that money. So that's, so that's a good position to be for the sewer system. And a lot of the things on the sewer plant are five to ten year service life. And we are, you know, we're seven years into using that new plant. So there are some of those things that we're gonna have to keep replacing. And then finally, the solid waste trash fund, that's kind of a, Yvette's bailiwick now, you know? She's in charge of all things trash in the city now. But that was, we were about two hundred thousand dollars in arrears in the sewer fund when I arrived in two thousand and eleven. And now we're a hundred, close to a hundred fifty thousand dollars up in the flat. I, as everybody comes on, I take them on a date, a tour day. And so all, everybody but you, I've given a tour. Old city facilities. You precede me, you're the only person here that precedes me. So in any case, yeah. And I guess I'll point out one other thing that you should all be, you are, I think, aware of. And I'll be a copa and remind you. But this audit is due to be posted, is due to be done on March thirty first of every year. We got to see in the first week of July, so we're well behind. There are, there are, if you look in the notes in the back, they talk about, actually, it's not in here, it's in the, it's in the single audit and I can provide that to you electronically. But they talk about deficiencies, they talk about that, you know, we weren't getting our bank recs done on time. We weren't doing a lot of accounting procedures on time. And, you know, I think, and Ozzy, I've talked to you guys about this the last several months, but I had kind of walked out of the accounting thing because of the new software. I didn't know how to use it. The bad news, good news is I had to do so much of this stuff because Chandler was brand new. And so I've learned a lot about the system and we're kind of back on track. And she was pestering me the last ten days about, about bank recs already for going forward. So she's working on stuff and. So, yeah.
I even took a webex of a banker.
Yeah, she's edging my kingdom.
It was free when this gets in the phone, so I just said, okay, I'll.
Yeah, so in any case, we're, we're doing real well. Like, took us a long time to get there, but we've got everything done and we've got processes in place to hopefully move forward and be better at this and I.
We work over the software now, everybody understands it?
We understand how it works. We're still not, we're still not overjoyed with it, but.
I also had three meetings like today with different software. I mean, nothing's happening, but it's a conversation.
Yeah, I did tell her, and I think I've told you all this before. We had this conversation about, hey, let's draw a line in the sand. And we felt like we, we can make it work, but I did tell her, you know, well, one of the things was we had budgeted a hundred grand to put this, to put this software in and in the end it only costs us about less than fifty. So the good news, bad news on that is, hey, it's fifty grand, you don't wanna waste fifty grand. But I feel a lot better about walking away from it if we decided to do that than the hundred grand. And certainly that's a decision that we'll bring to you guys. But, but I did tell her, hey, you're learning the new software, talk to other people while you're doing that too. Kind of talk about some of the.
It's like way hard future, but.
Yes, sir. That's a fine question. I don't know the answer to that offhand, so I can look at that. Well, hold on a second, because I have, I have a report due. Tell me the answer to that question.
You should have been prepared for this question.
Oh, I am, I just, I just forgot that I prepared for it. Oh, there it is. Okay, so from, yeah, the year before, we were up significantly. Yeah, six figures, so.
Unsignificantly, how, like?
Yeah. No, no, positive.
We had lots more money.
Yeah. And here's one of the things, and I try to, this is one of the things that just bothers me as an accounting person. I'm not, as I tell my wife, I'm not a bean counter anymore, that's not what I do. But, but it doesn't bother me because we are a cash basis system.
He said last year's mayor somehow was responsible for.
Right there, right there. No, one of the things that we run into is timing differences all the time. And so this year, I can tell you, we'll probably already be way ahead. Because last year, and this is part of why we show the loss technically for last year, is we didn't get all our cops money in, in last year. And had we gotten all of the cops money in, we'd be in the black. But this year. Well. No, yeah, the forty grand is really Murray's fault. If you get to the half of it, right? But like last week, I picked up two hundred thousand dollar checks for cops, one from the prior year and one for this year. And so, so, but if you're on accrual accounting, you would record that revenue because the revenue corresponds to last year. But because we're on cash basis, they, no, 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 until it's in your hot little hands, it doesn't count. Supposed to meet with them tomorrow, with them tomorrow, so. These are people that are gonna help us get onto accrual account. Any other questions about the, any other questions that I can accidentally have that writing? I don't think so. I will say, I started, the last two times, I'm going through my report and I'm like, I feel like I'm, you know, I highlight in dark stuff that's new and I haven't highlighted that much stuff. I'm taking care of a bunch of little tiny niggling little things, you know, and cleaning up emails and cleaning up files and all that stuff. So if you don't see a lot of action, there's plenty of action going on, it's just not report, you know, nothing to, nothing to really report, so. Oh, yeah, yeah. But we are gonna, but we decided we're gonna meet on August sixth. Yes, we're having a closed session only on August sixth, which. It starts open, you have to have an open session to have a closed session.
So wait, we're not having a meeting on August eleventh?
No, no meeting on August eleventh. Yeah, yeah, that has to happen.
On the twenty fifth?
Yeah. We're gonna give them a key to the city.
Are you joking me?
No, we're not.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
We've only done it twice since I've been here, so. David Bradshaw is one of them, who's on council. Somebody else peed, I think.
I heard cheating the city, I'm like, oh, they're playing with me. Okay.
I thought it was you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a very serious August body, body up here, that's no joke.
We will have the Peter Martinez presentation for IBC at that meeting as well. And the presentation from Lindsay Dale.
Oh, yeah, the election department.
From the registrar office.
And also my birthday.
That seems like something we should call the cops about too. So twenty nine, twenty eight, right?